Good morning. Welcome to Economic Development and Equity Subcommittee. It's April 27, 2021. Do I have approval of the minutes? May I have a motion?
Second.
I need to...
Was that Councilwoman O'Brien?
No, but I'm happy to...
Okay, Councilwoman, I think it was Councilwoman Stark.
Okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Stark?
Yes, I need the motion.
Okay, and Councilwoman Ansari is the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item number one is contract with Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Is this the only consent item? That's what I'm trying, yes, this is the only consent item. Do I have a motion? So moved. Councilwoman O'Brien, second?
Second.
Councilwoman Ansari is the second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 What I am going to do is I am going to move item five to the forefront. It's the development agreement for Metro Center Mall. It's for discussion and action. I'm moving that item forward due to the fact that two, three, and four are really meant for discussion. And I will move that forward. Councilwoman O'Brien?
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. We'll be hearing from Community and Economic Development Director Chris Mackey, I believe.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman O'Brien, yes, Program Manager Jeff Stapleton and I are here and ready. Thank you so much for having us here today. Again, I'm Chris Mackey. I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development. With me is Jeff Stapleton, Program Manager in Economic Development over all things related to transit-oriented development. And we are here today to talk to you about something we are absolutely thrilled about. And that is the redevelopment of Metro Center Mall into a true urban mixed-use development. I'm going to completely date myself here. I have, as you all know, I've been here my entire memory, my life. I remember fondly, I was there at Metro Center's grand opening. I was a Farrell's Ice Cream Parlor waitress. Great memories of Metro Center. And it's such an honor and privilege to be here with all of you as we work through determining what its next life is going to be. Hold tight one second, we're not, there we go. I'm going to pass it over to Jeff Stapleton, who is going to walk you through the mall itself, walk you through staff's proposed terms of a development agreement for this committee's consideration, and then we'll take any questions you might have. Jeff?
Thanks, Chris. So to start with the mall history is, you might know, Metro Center opened almost 50 years ago. Back in 1973, it was one of the largest malls in the United States when it opened. A prolific generator of sales tax revenue for the city, a true premier regional shopping center destination. But really, it was so much more than that. Everyone has their treasured memory from Metro Center's past. Whether that's being on the ice skating rink, or eating at Farrell's, or seeing the mall portrayed in Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure. Everyone has some great memory from Metro Center's past. But as with a lot of malls built during the 20th century, the mall began to decline. Sorry, a little problem with the clicker here. Department stores began to leave or relocate at the mall, or downsize at the mall during the late 2000s. And this ultimately led to the mall being acquired by Carlisle Development Group in 2012, with their stated intent to revitalize the mall, bring in additional investment, and reposition the property for success. Despite those efforts, department stores did continue to leave the mall. Carlisle was successful in getting Super Walmart to locate at the mall in 2017. But ultimately, they did announce their intent to sell the mall in January of 2020. And really unbeknownst to everyone, the global pandemic then arrived, temporarily closing the mall, and then all of a sudden permanently closing the mall almost two years ago. So during these years, you see here, 2015 to 2020, there are a lot of actions that staff was taking to prepare for redevelopment future of the mall. This goes all the way back to 2014 with council approval of the North Mountain Redevelopment Area Plan. So there you see Metro Center starred with the boundaries of the redevelopment area. This allowed for additional tools and resources and staff time and attention towards revitalizing the mall area. Under this plan, we were able to engage in a land use evaluation with Carlisle. What could the future of the mall be? What additional uses could we bring to the mall? Mixed use, being able to reposition, repurpose the mall structures. And so as Carlisle's looking at this mixed-use future, voters approved the T-2050 Plan. High-capacity transit pairs well with mixed-use development. That land use evaluation led to a request to counsel from the developer for a planned unit development zoning. So instead of the single-use commercial zoning with the regional shopping center designation, they wanted the PUD, which allowed for mixed use, additional heights and densities, which council adopted. And then, thanks to council support, staff has been able to execute on the T-2050 vision. And we have an end-of-line station being constructed right now adjacent to the mall. So even with all of those actions taken by the city, there still remain two key challenges with mall redevelopment. The first really centers around fragmented ownership. A lot of people may not realize this, but the mall has six different property owners, each with their own business plans and needs and wants. And each property also benefits from a shared parking easement. So a property owner has the right to park on other properties at the mall and vice versa. So what developer, you know, we have this once-in-a-generation opportunity, an 80-acre redevelopment possibility. But what developer can come in and work with these six owners and sell a vision and be able to amass enough property to build that economy of scale, to really be able to deliver a truly transformational project? And then the second challenge is, even if you do get all those properties, are you building something worthwhile? Is it compatible with the city's vision? So here, you see Park Central, the old Park Central. And we are using some of the same tools. So Park Central, a challenged mall site. We add light rail, we add the walk-abor and code zoning. Now we have Creighton Medical School with mixed use and the residential that's about to be developed. And so here you see the new Park Central, which developers not only can be able to round up the property through fragmented ownership, but have the vision to build something that's impactful, not just for the project site itself it controls, but for the surrounding community and for the rest of the city. And luckily, we have one development team that's risen above and has met the two challenges. They are led by Concord Wilshire Capital out of Florida. Concord Wilshire has developed projects across multiple product types throughout the United States. Retail, residential, mixed-use, industrial. They even developed the Roosevelt Point Development at Third Street and Roosevelt, a quality project for downtown. We are joined by Mr. Steve Serang, Chairman of Concord Wilshire, who's joining us on the call today. Also part of the development team, Heinz. Heinz is a global real estate firm, about 1,500 projects in their portfolio worldwide. About half a billion square feet under their management. Heinz most recently completed the Adeline Residential Tower at Third Street and Jefferson. We are joined by Mr. Chris Anderson, Principal for Heinz, who is joining us on the call today. And rounding out the development team is TLG Investment Partners. TLG is based out of Florida. They invest in multiple classes of real estate properties throughout the United States. So what are we building?
If I could, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, before Jeff goes into the proposed project that I know you're all waiting on pins and needles for, I do really want to recognize the developer that we're about to walk through their proposed project. So as you know, I've been here since 2014. We did showcase that project. We've showcased Metro Center, our economic development team, to 25 different developers. And as I was quoted on KJAS this morning, saying, "A great number of them were all mouth no trousers." And others just didn't have the vision that the city council had relayed to economic development and the community had relayed to economic development. And when Mr. Serang came in and met with Jeff and I about a year ago now, when he left the meeting, I turned to Jeff and said, "That's the developer of Metro Center. He sees the city's vision in what we want to do." So just wanted to recognize really what a great partnership over the last year as they've worked to put this project together for council's consideration and share with you how impressed we are with them.
Thanks, Chris. And so what is the developer building? So it is a mixed-use village, as Chris mentioned. It features about 3,200 residential units, about 383,000 square feet of commercial space. So this is retail, food and beverage, dining. And this is going to be centered around a town center main street. So here you see the rendering. Imagine you're standing on top of the Harkins Theater, looking towards the northeast, and you see the light rail platform there off to the right, the end-of-line station. And that main shopping street there is on the bottom left, heading out of that traffic circle to the west. So all this commercial space is going to be centered around this town center main street and about a two-acre public plaza with open space that you see in the fourth round of the rendering. This project's intended to be built in three phases, and at full build-out, it represents a capital investment of nearly $1 billion. Here's another rendering of the development. This is looking up the main shopping street to the northwest. So we mentioned Concord's involvement with Roosevelt Point. You see some of the similar design elements here, if you've been by the Roosevelt Point Development. Trees, shade structures, residential above the retail, active uses facing the street. That's the look and feel that the development team wants to bring throughout the site. So it's important to note, here's a project map, a site map. It's important to note what will remain at the mall and what is part of this intended development. So the development team intends to demolish most of the mall structure in its entirety, but a couple businesses will remain. So Walmart and Life Storage are not part of the proposed project, and the project will be built around those two properties. Harkins is in discussions with the development team to remain at the mall, which we're very encouraged by those discussions. And here's a key showing the different land uses at the proposed project. So the residential is really around the perimeter of the site, around Metro Parkway. And the commercial uses are centered around the Public Plaza, Park, and the main retail shopping street. And those are centered around our end-of-line light rail station on the east end of the site. As I mentioned, the project will be built in three phases. That first phase contains all those commercial uses, the public plaza, the main shopping street, and about a third of the residential units. And that's going to be centered around our end-of-line station, which we think that's a great location to kick off this project with the first phase. Second phase will be in the northwest corner of the site, about another third of the residential units proposed. And then the third phase would be in the southwest corner of the site. So in order to support this historic redevelopment opportunity, staff and the developer have reached the following business terms to support the proposed project. A developer will finance, construct, and build all project improvements. This includes district parking garage facilities, which will automatically transfer the city's ownership at no cost when completed. The developer will manage the garages, and they will commit to funding the O and M costs for the garages as well. In exchange, the city will pledge the general fund share of TPT revenues, general fund share only of TPT revenues generated by the project to acquire the parking facilities built by the developer. Those facilities will only be acquired when completed, when there's a C of O. And those facilities will be open to the public, but they will also contain easements for surrounding users who will pay monthly fees to support the O and M and capital costs for the facilities. So a little more information about the pledged TPT, the sources, the geographies it's coming from and for the term. So this is construction sales tax, lease tax, commercial retail tax. And it's being generated from two different geographies. So one is the project site. So as we mentioned, it's a three-phase project. So within each phase of the project, that general fund share only of the TPT would be pledged towards acquiring the assets. And that incremental impact that that phase has on the surrounding benefited areas, you see here, this is from Peoria down to the Arizona Canal, 35th Avenue over to I-17. So the incremental impact that each phase has on the benefited area above a 2022 baseline, that also would be pledged towards acquiring the assets. For the project site, that's estimated at about $67 million over 25 years. And for the benefited area, that's estimated at about $9 million over the 25 years. Some additional terms and conditions, these facilities will need long-term capital needs, which will be funded by user revenues. The developer will have the first option to purchase the facilities, the garage facilities, at fair market value at the conclusion of the 25-year phases of the project. We have been, staff and the developer have gone out to the community to present on this project. We went to the North Mountain Village last week. Councilwoman, you were gracious enough to have us at your constituent meeting on Monday. We were able to present on the project. And later today, we will be going to the Metro District Community Collaboration Meeting to also present. So where do we go from here? We are here before you today. And should you recommend, we would then head to formal counsel next month with approval there. We would then enter into the development agreement, at which point Concord would then close on the properties it has under its control. They would then file plans with the city and reach the demolition phase later this year, early next year. They would then build their first phase, and then later this decade, they would complete the subsequent phases of the project. So that completes the presentation on the business terms and the project details, and I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, just a couple of things before we make staff's recommendation. The garages from the day they're built and certificate of occupancy have received, just to confirm with you, those will be in ownership of the city regardless of the revenue that's created in the district and in the benefited area. Those garages will always belong to the city, and no other terms or no other sources of funds would be committed to them. So in 25 years, when our development agreement would be over, at 25 years of each of the garages, then those garages belong to the city. The city at that time can choose what it wants to do with them. It could monetize them, it could set them for a fair market value, it could continue to lease them as a revenue source. So that could happen in the future. I know, Vice Mayor Pastore, you're always keenly focused on the city's real estate and the future, since we have so little of it remaining, and wanted to make sure that those items were clear. So, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, on the line, just in case you have questions, again, as Mr. Stapleton said, we do have Mr. Serang with Concord Wilshire, we have Chris Anderson with Heinz, and we have Steve Betts with Betts Real Estate Advisors, the consultant on this particular project. And with that, staff does recommend that the Economic Development Equity Subcommittee move forward to the full city council recommendation on this item. Thank you, Madam Chair, and we're happy to take any questions you might have.
Councilwoman O'Brien, I'll lead it to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I just want to thank Chris Mackey for her tenacity in finding us after 25 tries, a developer and a group that will bring back Metro Center to the true prize that it used to be for Phoenix and can be again. Thank you to Steve Serang and Chris Anderson and Steve Betts. We're so excited. The community members at our district, one meeting on Monday night, couldn't have been more thrilled to hear about what is coming to Metro Center. So with that, I move that we approve the recommendation.
I'll second. I have a comment, too.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes, thank you. I do want to commend staff. I think Phoenix is leading the way in mall redevelopment. There's Park Central, there's Paradise Valley Mall, and now Metro Center. Outstanding work by our staff, and I'm very excited to support this. Thank you, Chairwoman.
And I would say yes, because I have also Chris Town Mall being revitalized. And I would say, majority of our malls now are in the mix and moving ahead. So, Chris, I just want to get clarity. And I think you gave it to me, but I just want to make sure. The three garages, it's three garages, correct?
Madam Chair, there could be as many as nine garages at build-out. We won't know the exact number until they start building and see the demand for the garages, but there could be as many as nine at build-out.
And those will be owned by the city?
Madam Chair, that is correct. They will be owned from the day they are constructed, receive certificate of occupancy. They will be transferred in full ownership, a full and permanent ownership to the city.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure of that. And then in 25 years, depending on who is sitting at the seat, then can determine, or that council can determine either to sell the asset, and they would have the first right, if not, continue to lease it the way it's being done.
Madam Chair, you understand it exactly correctly.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And I'm really proud, actually, it takes quite some time for people to understand our vision of what we want to see our Phoenix look like and see it rise in many different ways. So I want to commend Heinz and the developer, Concord Wilshire, and also Steve Betts in guiding in the conversation of what we would like to see that area and revitalize that area to back to its heyday. What I would be remiss to say that, I work closely with her. Councilwoman Williams was one of the strongest advocates for that area. And when she was leaving council, I asked her, I specifically asked her, "What is it that you want to see continued or want to see finished?" And I commend Councilwoman O'Brien for doing, I'm not sure if she's told you that, but her piece was Metro Center. I want to see Metro Center revitalized and back to where we need, where we need it and have it, and be able to complete that. And so I want to thank Councilwoman O'Brien, because that was one of, Councilwoman Williams's last statement to me when she stepped off the dais. And so I'm so happy for the both of you. I'm happy for Phoenix, but I'm also happy for the both of you and your community for what is coming your way. So thank you. There is a motion. I believe there is a motion and a second by Councilwoman O'Brien. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Next item, downtown digital kiosks.
Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee, we have Kenny Knutson, our Street Transportation Director, here at the table to provide this presentation.
Thank you, Ginger. Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. We're here today to discuss downtown interactive digital kiosks. This item is for information and discussion today. Most of you are familiar with this topic, as this item was presented for action at the Transportation, Infrastructure, and Planning Subcommittee last week. At that meeting, the Subcommittee voted to recommend city council approval to award the kiosk vendor contract, to approve an additional city staff person to manage and administer the contract, and to grant an exception to Phoenix City Code to allow off-site advertising on the kiosk to generate revenue to the city, that the city will receive a portion of. To begin with, I want to provide a brief background on what brought us here today. Kiosks in the downtown area are not a new concept. The downtown area had a kiosk for a number of years. These were managed by Downtown Phoenix, Inc. The information on the kiosk was not digital, but rather static in nature and not changeable. They aged and were ultimately replaced, removed. And in early 2020, we were approached by Downtown Phoenix, Inc.'s representatives to discuss the possibility of moving forward with the program to install digital interactive kiosks in the downtown area. The intent was to provide a better experience for people in the downtown area, including workers, residents, and of course, our visitors, and to be able to take advantage of some of the technology advancements that have happened with digital platforms. So streets move forward with a procurement process, where we utilize a request-for-proposals process to cover the installation, operation, and maintenance of these kiosks. We are specific that this contract would be at no cost to the city, and all these kiosks would be durable in our heat and climate. The goal is to have 20 of these kiosks installed and operational in time for Super Bowl in February 2023. And then we also have the option to be able to expand these kiosks outside of the downtown area. So we went through the selection process. We issued that request for proposals in January, earlier this year in January. Two proposals were received that were deemed responsive. The city convened a panel of department representatives, and ultimately, we selected Ick Smart City LLC, also known as ISC, as the most responsible and responsive proposer. So ISC operates nearly 200 kiosks across the United States, and will have over 500 kiosks operational by the end of this year. They also have kiosks in Tempe, and there have been no issues to date with those installations. And then we also noted they are an experienced company, and they can deliver these kiosks in time to meet our Phoenix schedule. Some key considerations there is, first, the city will have no upfront costs, an ongoing cost, with the exception of a city staff person to manage the program. And that person will be funded entirely with kiosk revenues provided to the city. Additionally, the kiosks will be installed in public right-of-way and will be owned and operated and maintained by ISC. The contract term will be up for 10 years with five years, with a one-year, five-year option extension. And it also includes advertising in the right-of-way, which is not permitted currently under Phoenix City Code, so we're asking for an exception to that. And then all advertising on these kiosks would comply with established guidelines for advertising in the downtown area. There are some additional benefits that they provide to the city. First is that the revenue generated by the advertising sales will be shared by ISC with City of Phoenix. Then we will receive one of the two amounts, either 32% of the gross advertising revenues generated on the kiosks, or $14,000 per kiosk, or $280,000 total each year, whichever is greater. There is a scheduled inflator escalator of 10% after five years. We also have $550,000 in advertising credit that is going to be provided to Phoenix to advertising across IC, ISC's markets across the United States, so advertising and marketing Phoenix. So additional benefits that were offered by ISC was 12.5% of advertising time being allocated to city services, so content related to city services, free director listing of all local businesses. Additionally, a 50% advertising rate discount for small businesses headquartered in Phoenix. And then also that Downtown Phoenix, Inc. will be able to display advertisements on any unsold advertising time at no cost. Some of the additional value-added items is that ISC will provide a solar panel option, which the city is going to requesting that free feature. They also have a maintenance plan that will include cleaning these kiosks five days a week, including one weekend day. And they will also stock anything that's needed to repair or replace the kiosk, providing 24/7 support and extra attention during the Super Bowl. It is also worth noting that ISC has not, never experienced a security or data breach on their kiosks. So before I, ISC, I'm sorry, before I turn it over for comments and questions, the item is scheduled for action at the May 11th formal council meeting. And to remind the Subcommittee members, this requested action is to award a contract that will be, formal will be to award a contract to Ick Smart City LLC to approve one additional street transportation staff person to manage and administer the contract, and that person will be paid for with kiosk advertising revenues, and to grant an exception to Phoenix City Code 3-8 to allow off-site advertising on the kiosk and public right-of-way. I would also note that we will continue to work with Devney and her team at Downtown Phoenix, Inc., as well as downtown stakeholders in ISC on the final location of these kiosk installations in the downtown area. Without Madam Chair, I would welcome any questions the Subcommittee members may have.
Councilwoman Ansari, do you have any questions?
Well, actually, now that Kenny gave the presentation, was wondering, can you elaborate on the maintenance plan and the cleaning and what that all entails?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Ansari, that maintenance and cleaning would obviously, making sure if there's any vandalism or any things that are spilled... if there's any vandalism or any things that are spilled or anything like that on the kiosk, it would make sure that they are kept in a clean and orderly fashion. We can provide additional detailed maintenance schedules once we have that established with the vendor. But the entire idea is because we want to make sure these are operational and functional for our visitors, for our residents. And so we will want to make sure that they present a great look for the City of Phoenix. And so that's part of it. I will, you know, we can definitely provide some additional details on what they will do for the maintenance and cleaning schedules for the kiosk at a later date.
Okay, and then are we also the shade features with solar panels? Is that something that we will definitely pursue?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Ansari, yes, that is what we're going to pursue. We know with our heat, especially in the downtown area, where we don't have building coverage for shade or maybe tree coverage for shade, we want to make sure visitors, when they're using the kiosk, have the opportunity to use it without having to worry about sun exposure as much as possible and also the glare that might be caused by that. So we do want to take advantage of that solar and shade option.
Great, well, these, I wasn't aware of these additional details until today. So I was already very excited about the kiosk, but I think these additional benefits are wonderful as well. So looking forward to voting on the item in May. Thank you.
I want to add some comments. Does anyone else have any comments? I know that we've seen them, we saw this in the Transportation Infrastructure Committee. The other comments that I want to add is to looking for the future towards an app. I know that this, the kiosk has an app, but I would like to really pursue creating an app form or platform so that then we could also be able to get our space back since we'll be looking to add more items onto the sidewalk of micro mobility and everything else. And so I really want to look at that. The other piece is Downtown, Inc., I'm going to call a meeting with everybody specifically around this piece, but also around the Super Bowl piece to make sure that everybody in the downtown area is aware of all the different things that we are doing and are prepared and also be able to provide comment and feedback. So I just want to, and anybody's more than welcome to join me. The one piece is the advertisement. Have we figured out how we are going to manage the advertisement? How do some of the nonprofits downtown become part of that? I think that's a bigger discussion and dialogue, but I just want to put it on the record at this moment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This was for discussion, I don't believe it's in action. And thank you, Kenny, for the update.
You're entirely welcome.
Now we're moving to item three, Super Bowl update.
Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee, for item number three, Super Bowl update, we have John Chan, our Phoenix Convention Center Director, here along with guests. And he'll introduce his guests.
Thank you, Ginger, and good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. As you know, in February of 2023, and just a little more than nine months from now, Arizona will be hosting Super Bowl 57. This will be the fourth time that the game will be held in greater Phoenix. Today, we're here to provide an update to the Subcommittee on our planning efforts. I'm joined today by Jay Perry, President and CEO of the Arizona Super Bowl Host Committee, along with Kyle Hedstrom, Senior Vice President. Also with us is Roxanne Favors, the city's Major Events Administrator. So in our industry, we like to say that bidding on and hosting these major events is a team sport. And over the years, we've developed a great working partnership with our partners such as Arizona Super Bowl Host Committee and other partners on these bids. And we have a mutual goal to make this, the next Super Bowl, the best yet. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay Perry.
Well said, John, thank you. Well, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee, thank you for allowing us to come and talk about Super Bowl. We are on the clock and we are excited, as John said, to have it back for the fourth time. I'm going to date myself and take a page from Chris Mackey's book. We've hosted in 1996 over at ASU and I was at that game as a fan. We hosted then at State Farm Stadium when it was relatively new in 2008 and was there as a fan. And then had an opportunity to work in a leadership role when we hosted in 2015 and now going into 2023. So we're excited to tell you firsthand that the scope, the magnitude, and the impact of Super Bowl continues to increase. And what we wanted to share with you today is a bit of background about the Host Committee, how we work together as a region, and then give you a peek into some of the plans coming up and get any questions on the table. Of course, we're going to lead off with a video because that's what we do. Okay, well, as you saw from the video, we are a great sports town, a lot of support and excitement. And what I can tell you is that Super Bowl really goes beyond sport. And we use the next year leading up to the game to plan and execute programs that are going to have a positive impact on Arizona and specifically on the Valley of the Sun. So our goal as a Super Bowl Host Committee is to create that lasting social impact on our communities as well as economic impact in our region. We are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit corporation. We have a Board of Directors that is led by David Rousseau as our Chair. In his day job, he's the President of SRP. We also have Larry Fitzgerald, who is an Executive Board Chair, and then Michael Bidwell as well, who have provided incredible leadership planning for this game, but also really being on the forefront of how we can stay ahead of, as John said, what is really competitive to host these major events. And so us working as a region really gives us a leg up on that. So when we think about our guiding principles as a Host Committee, working on behalf of the region, first and foremost, it's to showcase Arizona on a global platform. This is a giant commercial for Arizona, our incredible business community, what a great place this is to live, the diversity and inclusion that we have here in Arizona. And so that's number one. Second, as I've mentioned, fuel the economic engine for the region. That happens around the game. But as we'll talk about, we have programs that also create a long tail on that economic impact. And lastly, leave a lasting legacy. So how can we leave our communities in a better place? And we'll talk about some of those programs today. When we think about all the stakeholders in our region and really from on a national level, the Host Committee works with all of our Arizona stakeholders, the NFL, and national partners to plan and execute a successful Super Bowl on behalf of our state. And so some of the things that we take on, again, we're the key point person with the NFL, event production, fundraising to host the game, sponsor fulfillment, and the list goes on and on. The point of looking at this wheel that is everything from our tourism industry to our public safety officials, to our elected officials, our hospitality entities, our nonprofits, I won't read them all out. But the point is that we want to make sure for Arizona, we have an integrated and a very collaborative and connected effort for Super Bowl and avoid any sort of fragmented efforts that may happen. So that's why I'm showing you that. I wanted to quickly look back at 2015, which was a record-breaking Super Bowl for the NFL, but more importantly, for Arizona. With your partnership in Arizona, in Phoenix, and your support and many others around Arizona, we were able to put some great numbers up on the board. And so I won't take you through all of these. The big number is $720 million in economic impact. And that was for basically the 10 days, you know, the month around Super Bowl. And it also included last time Pro Bowl, which was the Saturday before, the weekend before Super Bowl. We have this measured very consistently by our partners at ASU. So that's always important. We look to give back at least $2 million to Arizona nonprofits. And we had 27 grants last time. Obviously, it's a big media event, it's a big visitor event. We were the first Host Committee in Super Bowl to have a bilingual website, media plan, and social media outreach here in Arizona, so we're proud of that. Obviously, transportation and tourism is huge around the airport, around hotel occupancy. And again, we'll share some numbers with you. What I'll tell you about the Super Bowl, Super Bowl 49 in 2015, it is still the most-watched TV program in the U.S. of all time over regular broadcast channels. And that was broadcast by NBC and we had over 114 million viewers looking at Arizona during Super Bowl weekend. So looking ahead, we have a lot of KPIs that we look at for Super Bowl. We love to measure things. Our goal, as John said, is to make this the best Super Bowl yet. So looking at at least $500 million in economic impact, again, at least $2 million going back to nonprofits in Arizona, and to afford these programs and others, we have a fundraising goal of $50 million. And so as I mentioned, we look at Super Bowl as a regional effort. And what I'll tell you is the NFL really appreciates how the Arizona community works together, the municipalities, the tourism industry, all of our transportation entities. So this is, sets us apart as a market when we are bidding for future major events. And it's our time to shine. And there's a lot of different ways we can do that. Obviously, getting residents and visitors moving around the valley very seamlessly, safely. And we will have a leg up on LA who hosted last year, who hosted earlier this year for Super Bowl. They did an excellent job. When we met with them to debrief and we said, you know, what was one of the things that you wanted to make sure that you handled well? And they said, well, you know, we decided to lean into our traffic because we've got traffic here in LA. And so we found some humor in that frankly, and we know that we can do better. So from an airport standpoint, we work with all seven airports around the valley. Obviously, Phoenix has the majority, Sky Harbor, Deer Valley, Goodyear, and those will all be hotspots, and then streets. And so that is, of course, the goal to be clear of construction, to have decor welcoming, again, our residents and our visitors, and to make sure that they are, you know, moving around friendly and very, in a friendly way and very safely. I mentioned economic impact. There's two main programs, but this list is much, much longer. Business Connect is our supplier diversity program that partners with, we partner with the NFL and with the community. And you'll hear more from that in just a moment from Kyle. And the other one is our CEO Forum. And that is working with our Economic Development Stewards, including the City of Phoenix, to invite at least 50 CEOs from around the world to come to Super Bowl, to learn about Arizona, to learn about the valley as a place to do business, and invite them to expand their business, to move their headquarters. And we really use it as an indoctrination into why Arizona is such a pro-business environment. And then lastly, the community impact programs, which I touched on. There are a number of different initiatives that we do that will impact Phoenix and many of the communities around the valley. I'll give you a couple examples from 2015 and Super Bowl 49, just so you can understand what we're talking about here. In the education realm, health and wellness, DE and I and social justice and sustainability is what we've heard from our local partners as to what's important as we host the Super Bowl. So for education, for 2015, we actually gave a grant to the Phoenix Public Library Foundation for their summer reading program. Around health and wellness, we also granted to the city's FIT PHX program some money so that they could, again, build up that program and make it stronger. Lots of goings-on around sustainability. We did tree plantings in five city parks around the valley, Phoenix being one of them. And then we were really proud, and many of you know Devany Price, who's now with Downtown Phoenix. And she led our Super Bowl Central Initiative for the Host Committee last time. And that was dubbed Kick the Waste. And then we worked with you very closely on that for Super Bowl Central. And it was the first reduced waste program of its kind for Super Bowl. It was enormous and we were able to direct 73% to basically recycling as opposed to trash. So just gives you an idea of the breadth of what will go on around Super Bowl. What I will tell you is in working with the NFL, we have many calls with them each week. We have monthly and quarterly meetings with them. And we are still early in the process and early in the planning, but we wanted to make sure that we shared kind of a broad overview with you and will keep you updated as we move forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Kyle Hedstrom, my colleague from the Host Committee. Thank you all.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. Excited to be here, I think, again, to talk about Super Bowl 57 and all of our planning, give you a little bit insight of what's going on. As Jay mentioned, we are early on in some of that planning, but it's exciting to see some of the interest and, you know, get the NFL out here as we are sub 300 days out to February 12th of 2023. So as we make our way towards the game and hosting Super Bowl 57, we work with the NFL and a number of different groups on a multitude of planning elements. But I think some of the ones that usually take front and center stage would be the events, the official NFL events. And so we just wanted to walk through some of those, some of which we'll talk about where they were in 2015, but just give you an overview of the, what will be a long but important list of the official events. So the first one, Super Bowl Experience, this is the NFL event that is focused on fans and family. It's a ticketed event. It was at the Phoenix Convention Center back in 2015. Very large attendance and success, the last go-around. The Super Bowl Media Center, that is where the media will collect, where they do their radio broadcasts, some live broadcasts. And again, as we mentioned, the large, over 5,000 media members, the last go-around. Most of them will be operating out of there for the week of Super Bowl, also at the Convention Center. NFL Honors is the NFL's annual award show where they award the MVP, offensive MVP, defensive MVP, a number of different awards, a great produced show that's live broadcast. And so that one was with ESPN and then also at Symphony Hall in 2015. NFL Friday Night Party, again, this list just keeps going. But this is the NFL's VIP party, which is typically hosted on Friday. And we'll be working with them on placing that event. Outdoor Fan Experiences, we had a number of those in 2015. We'll be looking to expand on that and work with the NFL to find unique fan experiences and incorporating our beautiful outdoors as we lean into that element of Arizona and Super Bowl 57. Super Bowl Opening Night, this is a name change, but this is the Media Day where the teams and coaches gather for their interviews, their one-on-one interviews with the media. This was at the Suns Arena, the last go-around, and has now evolved to be somewhat fan-engaging as well. Super Bowl Music Fest is a new event. It's a three-day or three-night music festival with A-list talent and is a ticketed event that will take place typically in an arena, but is new to Super Bowl and is one of the official events that we'll be hosting this go-around. NFL Headquarters Hotel, that was at the Hyatt in downtown, where the NFL executives, their partners, and a number of their VIPs will stay both and then engage in a lot of their meetings. their meetings and conferences. And then last, we have the Super Bowl Social Media Command Center, which is run jointly by the NFL and the Host Committee, where we answer questions around social media and directions and all kinds of social media requests that we get from vans, visitors, and locals alike around Super Bowl. So a long list, and probably there's a few more here, but wanted to just touch through some of the big ones as we make our way with the NFL to plan and place these events. The next up is the third-party groups and NFL partners. So we're excited that we have received a lot of interest, early interest, from the NFL partners and then other third-party groups. Here are just a few examples that are looking for, again, where do we bring our event, what's available, what venues are available? And the Host Committee acts as one of those go-betweens to, to place these events, help our partners, help the NFL's partners and a number of these different groups to find the best place so that they can have an incredible event and, and again, drive, drive success to Super Bowl XLVII and take care of the large group of brands and events that will be coming out between now and next February. The lodging and tourism, again, a major element to what the Super Bowl brings and as it relates to the economic impact around the game. So kind of wanted to break this down in two ways, the first being the official room block. So for, in 2018, with our partners at Visit Phoenix and the rest of the CBBS around the valley, we went out and secured a set number of rooms, a minimum number of rooms for the NFL to allow us to host the game. And so, you know, thank you to our partners here in Phoenix that secured the hotels and the rooms that then allowed us to get Super Bowl XLVII. So just a comparison between Super Bowl XLIX in 2015 and, and the block of rooms there as opposed to where we're at now, we went from 49 hotels to 65 hotels, an increase of 33%. The rooms also went up from 10,000, just sorry, of 11,000 to just shy of 13,000, or an increase in 19%. I think this is important as the hotels, there's more that came online, and then a lot of them that understood the benefits and the success that Super Bowl brings. And being a part of the block, you know, brings that success. Without, without these rooms, we're not able to, to drive back the economic success for everybody. So looking back at Super Bowl XLIX, there was a significant lodging impact. So for, for the Phoenix occupancy and the average daily rate, worked with our partners over at Visit Phoenix and the Smith Travel Research Group with some great data. So over the weekend, the same weekend in 2014, as opposed to when Super Bowl was here, there was 56% occupancy in 2014. That rose to 97% for the same weekend in 2015 around Super Bowl. So a 72% jump in occupancy, you know, near all beds and all rooms occupied, which was incredible. The daily rate also sees a massive jump when the Super Bowl comes through town. So in 2014, it was $155 a night, and that jumped 148% to $386. So again, there is a significant and tangible benefit to the Super Bowl, bringing, you know, a lot of fans, visitors, partners, and the NFL on, on all of our hotel and tourism As we move through and we get more into our programs, we have Business Connect, as Jay had mentioned earlier. This is a phenomenal program that we partner on with the NFL. And it is a supplier diversity initiative designed to promote equitable and inclusive procurement practices at NFL events, Host Committee events, and a number other of third-party and partner events as well. So what does that mean? So we, we've partnered with a lot, a lot of different groups, local organizations, to push out the message to minority women, LGBTQ, and veteran-owned businesses that offer specific services around events, and invited them to participate in this program that will drive both contracts, so actual contracts for these businesses. And then also, too, we want to provide networking and business and professional development to all the participants so that while we, we hope to see an increase in the business and the dollars driven to these businesses, we also want to make sure that we're providing, you know, some experiences and some lessons learned that they can continue on post-Super Bowl. And with that, I'll turn it over to Roxanne.
Roxanne, I'm going to turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Jay and Kyle. So, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee, as you know, one of the benefits of the investments that the city's made in our infrastructure, it's allowed us to go all-in on major events. And in, as such, hosting these major events requires, such as Super Bowls, collegiate championships, music festivals, they all require a significant amount of coordination. So in 2014, the city established an internal team to facilitate the planning and coordination of the growing number of major events that we had coming in the pipeline. So we, for, for, just as we did in 2015, this upcoming Super Bowl, we have established and reconstituted our Super Bowl Steering Committee. Our, our committee is focused on seamless coordination, safety and security, and creating a great fan experience for all the attendees. The photo that you see on the right is of Super Bowl Central in 2015. This is part of the outdoor fan campus that helped to draw a million people to downtown Phoenix. Our Steering Committee is guided by four principles of collaboration, accountability, communication, and building civic pride. So one of the things that in our Steering Committee, it's comprised of staff representing 19 city departments. We have a big team, a lot, a lot of city departments involved, along with our strategic partners. So at this time, I'm going to introduce Roxanne Favors, our Major Events Coordinator, and she's going to talk in detail about some of the working group. And as I like to say, this is where the rubber meets the road from the planning perspective. We have 10 working groups with people in their own disciplines that are involved in the planning effort. Roxanne?
Thank you, John. Each of the working groups are led by a member of our Steering Committee, and our strategic partners are part of those working groups. In addition, the working groups can identify additional strategic partners beyond our partners that are listed here, Visit Phoenix, Valley Metro, Downtown Phoenix, Inc., of course, the Arizona Super Bowl Host Committee, and the NFL. And really, the working groups are responsible for developing and implementing some detailed plans. So their work includes focusing on operational contingency and communications plans for the event. And overall, for the Steering Committee, their goal is to support the NFL and the Host Committee's planning efforts to elevate and advance and enhance the fan experience. I'm going to briefly go over the various working groups that we have, starting off with our Streets and Traffic Working Group. They focus on street closures and the dynamic signage that take place. They'll also coordinate with our Planning Department on construction moratorium notifications, ADA drop-off zones, and multimodal planning and traffic management. And this group will also be responsible for incorporating the new downtown kiosks as part of the planning efforts. The Public Transit Team works closely with their partners over at the Glendale Public Transit, and they focus on enhancing the bus and light rail service plans, and that's increasing service frequencies, identifying additional parking, parking lots to be part of the program. And they also work throughout the valley with other transportation providers. This group works closely also with the NFL's Regional Transportation Committee to ensure that we're moving fans safely and securely, but very efficiently, to and from the games. The Airport Coordination Working Group covers all things, from the time the teams land at Sky Harbor Airport, so managing the team charters, as well as managing the general aviation regional reservation system for the private aircraft that come into the airports here in the valley. And of course, working closely with our customer service navigators to do a warm welcome to all of our visitors, as well as ensuring that our restaurants and retail at the airport are showing their pride for the game. The Parking Coordination, we work closely with Downtown Phoenix, and they help assist with reaching out to the publicly operated parking lots to ensure that we have an accurate downtown parking inventory to be able to support the event parking needs that will take place in the downtown, as well as identifying any additional remote lots that can be used. Our public safety is, of course, led by our Police and Fire, and they coordinate with all of the federal, state, local, and tribal agencies. They manage the incident management teams, as well as the free speech zones and traffic control. Permitting is led by our Planning Department, and they focus on the temporary building permits and inspections to support the events, as well as our Parks Department is part of this team for any park permits with use or signage permits. The advertising, an important part of their work is the clean zone education and enforcement that will take place. Business Licensing is a new working group that we've established, and it's going to be led by our City Clerk's Office. And this really covers vending business licenses, so our Finance Department team is also part of it, as well as our special liquor license applications, as well as downtown vending enforcement. Green Initiatives is led by our Public Works, and they'll work closely with the NFL Green Program on zero-waste initiatives, recycling, food recovery, education, and outreach. Our downtown community outreach is led by our Community and Economic Development Representatives with close coordination with Downtown Phoenix, and they are tasked with communicating to all of the downtown stakeholders, the businesses, the neighborhoods, the building operators and property managers, to really inform them about the events that are taking place, to understand their needs to be able to continue to operate, and to support the fans that are coming downtown with great restaurants and activities. They will also be responsible for planning and hosting those community engagement meetings around the Super Bowl, as well as our Marketing and Communication Team. And this team is focused on putting together the know-before-you-go information, not only for our residents, but visitors that are coming into the downtown, as well as event promotion of those activities that will be here, as well as coordinating with our media coordination. And really, for the working group, we are focused on delivering that safe, secure, and memorable experience for the fans, both our residents and our visitors.
Thank you, Roxanne. So as Jay mentioned, we are on the clock, 291 days until kickoff. Over the coming months, the NFL will be conducting regular site visits to Phoenix, and as that occurs, we'll learn more and more about the events and get into the details of the planning, locking down the event venues and the programming hours of operation, days of operation. So all that, that is going to be developed over the coming months. In addition, our working groups will be developing their operational plans as we move on, and we're happy to come back in the late summer, early fall time period to kind of unveil some of the more detailed information about the event. And then with that, we are happy to take questions.
Sorry, thank you. I'm just curious with regards to how we coordinate with the Phoenix Open. I know that is also a, a major event, albeit not as large as the Super Bowl, but that, and I know it's called something else besides Phoenix Open, but it'll always be Phoenix Open to me. But do you coordinate with that group that is organizing that event? Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. It is, it is funny. We will all, all always call it the Phoenix Open. And so just last year, when the NFL decided to extend the schedule by a week and push Super Bowl back by a week, there was some question as to whether the PGA would make an adjustment as well. And so they did, and they backed up the Phoenix Open so it could be on the exact same weekend as Super Bowl because they do garner quite a bit of success from the visitors that come in from Super Bowl as well. So it will be the place to be, for sure. And we do quite a bit of coordination. We have a great partnership with the Thunderbirds. They are big supporters of the Super Bowl, and they understand the economic impact and just the positive impact it has on our communities. So we work closely with them, and it, and we work closely with Scottsdale. Obviously, we have a fantastic partnership with them as well. And it, you know, it's everything from public safety to marketing to transportation. So there are a lot of facets, but, but we do work together. So we're, we're expecting it to be bigger and better than ever.
I think it will be, too. Thank you. I appreciate the comments. I'm curious, too, about the hotels. Obviously, Kirland and Desert Ridge will probably help serve the Phoenix Open. Can you separate the analysis of who's getting the rooms? I'm just curious.
So the rooms that we mentioned that are part of the official Super Bowl XLVII block are, the, those rooms are on, on hold for the NFL to use.
Got it.
And so we'll be working with the NFL to allocate those rooms, you know, whether that's their fans, media, the NFL staff, and a number of other groups. But that does live separately from, from the open.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, anyone else have any questions?
Chairwoman, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you so much for the presentation. I think this is the most in-depth one I've seen so far on the Super Bowl, and it was very helpful to just understand the, the depth and breadth of everything that's going on. Obviously, the economic pressures are significant and will be significant. I'm wondering, in an effort to ensure that the economic impacts are really beneficial for all of our residents, and I know I've been receiving a lot of questions just about how someone who may not be a business owner or be, you know, directly involved, but just a community member, are there mechanisms they can either provide input or get more up-to-date information, or is that something that maybe is up to us as council members to work with you all to, to host such information sessions?
So, so great question. We do have azsuperbowl.com, which is our website, and that will be the hub of really all the local information, if you will, less about the game, but most, you know, primarily around the activities and the programs and the volunteering. And so I think that will always be a good source of information, and as Roxanne mentioned, kind of know-before-you-go information. We, we also have a robust volunteer program that we didn't mention. And so last, for the last Super Bowl, we had about 10,000 volunteers that participated in that week leading up to the game, and they greeted visitors at the airport, and they greeted visitors at certain hotels. And then downtown Phoenix was kind of the hotspot for directing traffic. So there's a number of ways that people can get plugged in through their local municipalities, through the Host Committee. And so I think it just depends on kind of what their level of interest is.
Okay. And then...
I was going to say, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. Additionally, if there are community, community meetings that you would like us to attend on the city Steering Committee side, we can coordinate that through our community outreach that will be able to come out to the community and provide, provide updates of, as we know more about where the events will be taking place and how those things will be impacting the community, sharing all things about the ease of getting into downtown movement. So as the programming gets developed, we'll develop a very robust community meeting schedule. And of course, we welcome the opportunity to meet with all of the constituents.
Perfect. That's, that's great. I, I definitely think that will be of interest to a lot of different community groups, so we'll be in touch with you on that for sure. And then my final question was around, just, I wanted to get a little bit more information about the, the money that you mentioned that's raised for nonprofits and how that works and, you know, who's really benefiting from that.
Sure. So on our, we call it a legacy grant program, and we partner with the NFL to identify charities that fit within those, really those four pillars that I mentioned earlier, education, health and wellness, DE and I, and social justice, and then sustainability. And so we will have an application period for... And so we will have an application period for nonprofits to apply and that will happen over the summer. And then in kind of late summer, early fall, we'll identify those, those grants that will take place and then they'll start to, you know, roll out, if you will, the fall and into the winter and then leading up to Super Bowl. So there'll be a grant application process for that.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor? Councilwoman O'Brien. Thank you, Councilwoman Ansari.
Thank you so much. I am curious if, if state staff can answer questions about increased availability to our public transportation to our citizens, especially outside of the realm of light rail.
Councilwoman O'Brien, members of the subcommittee, that is one of the things that our public transit working group is working on plans to look at how to enhance bus service. So for example, in 2015, they ran additional bus service. They, they implemented a bridging program. They had additional bus lines to help people get around easier. So that would be part of the plans that the, that working group develops.
Okay, excellent. And I do want to thank you all for being here today. This is, as Councilwoman Ansari said, the most information we've seen about Super Bowl and it looks incredible and look forward to continued updates. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So I appreciate this in-depth presentation because we have been asking many questions to staff regarding the Super Bowl. And so I requested this to be on the subcommittee since it will be affecting the subcommittee in many different ways. There are a number of things that I have questions about. Very similar to, I heard, and I don't know what slide it was on, so it's okay, the business piece that inviting businesses to come to Arizona, to come to Phoenix, or attract them to Phoenix, who pays for that?
The host committee. So we, so we organize that program and really act as the leader of it with, if you will. And then through our fundraising efforts, we're able to pay for the majority of those initiatives around the CEO Forum for the weekend of the game. And I may have mentioned, you know, we work with Arizona Commerce Authority, we work with GPAC, we work with a number of our city entities to, again, plan and execute it.
Okay. Because I want to say that this committee, I want to say it was this committee, I sit on another one, that this committee approved funding to attract businesses unless I'm mixing up the, the dynamic, but I believe we put money to CED at our last meeting. And I want to say it's 150,000 or 200, I cannot remember exactly.
Vice Mayor?
I believe it was us and we did, I think, 75,000.
Okay, okay.
People last, last meeting, last subcommittee meeting, if I recall correctly.
Vice Mayor and subcommittee members, that is correct. At our last meeting on March 23rd, Christine Mackey, our Community and Economic Development Director, came forward to the subcommittee requesting approval of 75,000 dollars and it was to host, I believe, 16 businesses during the time of the Super Bowl. And so that is what we would want clarification on is if that is a part of the CEO Forum or as if it's separate from the CEO Forum.
Thank you, Ginger.
Yes, Ginger, that, that initiative that was, that the subcommittee approved was part of the city's economic development, business development strategy. So that's an ongoing thing, program that Chris and her team have operated, for example, during the Final Four, the championship game. That's a kind of a separate program and through the city's partnership with GPAC and the Commerce Department, Chris and her team will also be involved in the CEO Forum through that opportunity. So they're separate but related items.
So I guess my question now is why are we going separate? Why is it separate? Because if there's funding through the CEO piece, why are we operating separately? And why are we not leveraging?
Vice Mayor and subcommittee members, Christine Mackey, Community and Economic Development Director is coming to the table to speak to her specific request.
Madam Chair, that's an outstanding question. The reason that we're running them as two separate programs is we have very specific initiatives that we're working on with the city council to be able to showcase items in each specific council district, whether it is related to affordable housing, whether it's related to business attraction, whether it's related to some of the fun-ertainment programs that we've worked on. And they're very specifically related to development and redevelopment and businesses for Phoenix where the CEO Forum that is hosted through the Super Bowl is really focused on the entire state of Arizona. Ours are very specific initiatives that we're receiving guidance from your council offices that you'd like to showcase during that specific time.
Okay, so that makes sense to me. Okay. Because I was just wondering, for me, I was thinking we, we allocated 75,000, does that go into the CEO piece? But now I understand it, why it's separate because it's very specific to Phoenix.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you will then be also engaged with the CEO piece?
Yes, ma'am. We work very closely with Chris Camacho and with Sandra Watson, with the Commerce Authority and the Greater Phoenix Economic Council on this.
Oh, I got it now. Okay. Had an aha moment. Thank you, Chris.
My pleasure.
My next question is hotels. Is there a spot or landing on the page as to where there is availability? Because I know of a business right now that comes to Arizona every year for the Phoenix Open and does a block of 40 rooms. What's happening or what has happened is that now those rooms have been eaten up by, and it's not, it's a good thing, by the Super Bowl or by the NFL. So is there a page on the, on the Super Bowl page to say, here's where you can go start to look for other rooms or blocks?
Chairwoman Pastor, so there, there isn't anything currently on our website again as is the block is managed more directly by the NFL. However, we do receive a number of groups possibly have heard of the group that you might be mentioning that are looking for rooms and we do everything that we can to help them at least point them in the right direction, make some introductions. Again, we understand that there, while there's a definite positive economic impact with all the rooms that are, that are booked up, that there are groups that will be coming in and in need of rooms. So we do everything that we can to work with the NFL and work with our partners, whether that's Visit Phoenix or the other CBB partners across the valley to find the appropriate spot for, for groups that come in and are looking for rooms or other information. So we'll continue to do that, but we act as part of whoever's receiving that request.
So, so Madam, Madam Chair, in addition to the, the room block that Jay and her team work with the NFL on, so to your question about people looking for information about where to stay, that kind of falls under the responsibility of Visit Phoenix, our Convention Visitors Bureau. So they, they will have dedicated information for people that are coming to the valley specifically for the Super Bowl, things to do, places to stay.
Okay. That, that, thank you. I'm only thinking if I know I want to go to the Super Bowl or just a company in general and I know most big companies have their, their lobbyists be able to do that piece, but some don't, the mid-sized companies. I was just thinking, okay, I would go to the Arizona Super Bowl, have a page looking for hotels or, I don't know, lodging, and then be able then to click on a link that then maybe would lead me to Visit Phoenix, that then could, could do that. That's, that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking, or the Housing, Hotel and Lodging Association, that's Kensebo, and be able then to link, start, so that then they can start doing the hunt.
Yeah, I think that you're, you're touching on two different things here, but definitely things that we, we're working on and currently and will continue to develop. So I think if you're going to our website, you know, we'll be working with driving, people looking for where to stay, what to do, you know, how to get around, all of that good stuff and pushing that back, you know, mostly to our CBB partners as they have kind of built that on their end. And then as we just receive, you know, direct requests around rooms from corporate partners or corporate groups or large groups, either that they will go to the CBB, whether that's Visit Phoenix or another one, and then come to us if they need additional help or if they come to us and we're unable to help them. We also push them, you know, to back to Visit Phoenix or other groups that, that might have a little bit more availability to help.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. My next question is, Councilwoman Ansari mentioned it, what type of community events? And when I'm saying community events, what events are free for the community? There will, will there be a page so that then that tells us, okay, you know, we can lead our community to say, hey, if you want to be involved, these are the events that are happening?
Yes. That will be on the Arizona Super Bowl Host Committee and that will, you know, populate as events get planned and onto the calendar. And again, the goal is to start those events in the fall and not, right, not have them just all on the weekend of Super Bowl, but make sure that we're really kind of maximizing the fun and the experiences and the memories that our residents can make in the months leading up to Super Bowl.
Thank you. And one of my biggest concerns is transportation and what transportation means parking. And parking, then that leads to residents that are now, I would say, since the last Super Bowl, we have a lot more residents within our downtown. And so I'm assuming, which I just want to verify, that those pieces are being worked out and garages are being identified if they're not taking local transportation.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. Those are part of the, the plans that our working groups are, are putting together.
Okay, all right. And then...
Oh, I would just add, just because you're bringing it up, this is a really hot topic with the NFL as well. So they spend a lot of time, they have subcontractors that have worked on multiple Super Bowls and so they really dig into everything from our aviation plans to our streets plan to our parking. I mean, their favorite topic is parking frankly. And so we spend a lot of time talking about that and, and, and the concern is, as you said, both for our residents and how we can make sure they can participate seamlessly but also visitors. So lots of energy around your question.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad everybody's thinking the same way. And then it leads to me, during that time, John, you said, had said that we were going to add additional bus lines and are those going to be free? Are the fare to come downtown, is it free?
Madam Chair, I, I, I will defer to our public transit department. I don't recall if those, you know, additional bus service were, were free during the Super Bowl, but that's something that we could address with our public transit team.
Yeah, or what would the cost be? What does that look like?
Sure.
We like the way you're thinking. We like the way you're thinking on that. Let's make it easy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And my final question is about the legacy grant program. You mentioned some items at the very beginning that have been funded, our tree program and I want to say, I can't remember what else, the, I want to say three or four items were named.
Right.
It was the tree...
It was the trees, it was the library, it was the fitness program were the ones I mentioned.
Okay. I guess my question is because this is the first time we've heard of it, or at least I've heard of it, how were these projects identified?
Yeah, so I, I think there's kind of two things that happen. One is the grant program and so that's the 2 million, over $2 million that'll go back to Arizona nonprofits. That will occur through an application process that starts this summer. And so that's kind of the, the grant piece of it. And then the other elements, some of the tree plantings, some of the kind of collaborative initiatives, whether it's a football clinic that happens in a community, those, those we really work with our city partners on and our sponsors on to see where they'd like to see those resources directed, if you will, and, you know, where there's a need and can we go to our low-income communities. So we kind of, we work with our city partners and our sponsors to, to really kind of figure out that game plan.
Really, I appreciate that because I, I think probably the majority on this, on this, right now, the committee meeting, this is the first time we've heard of it. And so that's a, I, I just needed to get some clarity around that because if one thing that we're really looking at as a council is really the, the equity piece and making sure that all neighborhoods or all districts are receiving the same in an equity piece, one of the challenges that we have, and I represent this committee, but one of the challenges we have is that when efforts like this happen, a lot of resources come downtown and then other districts don't receive the same. And so we're trying, because of that, we are trying to make sure that there's equity across all our districts and receive the same. And so that's why I was asking the question. I just needed to get you, give you some context and, and background around it. But I really appreciate all your work because I know this is, this is a heavy lift and you have many committees to run and many people to keep happy. And so appreciate your work and effort and anything you need from us. We are all here to serve, also be able to serve your committee in able to get resources to make sure that our city is shiny and also that the Super Bowl is well represented. So thank you very much to both of you and staff. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, thank, thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to coming back later in the year as we have more information and details. We'll, we'll be back. And then with that, some closing remarks from Jay.
Yeah, sure. So thank you, Madam Chair, for your, your words of encouragement. It means a lot. We do like to say this is a full-contact sport, hosting a Super Bowl, and, and it really takes an amazing amount of teamwork. And so I want to just say thank you to you all because, you know, the history from 2015 and the city of Phoenix was so positive. It was such a great partnership and we're using that as a foundation for how we can even take it to the next level as we work towards 2023. You know, our overall goal, and we've talked a lot about execution and the business of this and the metrics, you know, our overall goal is to make this a positive experience for our residents, right, and our businesses and of course, our visitors and just create some really great memories around Super Bowl and Phoenix. And so sometimes, you know, we don't talk about that enough, but I've heard so many great stories from 2015 of our residents has had a great time, as you said, taking advantage of the free activities and making their Super Bowl memories. And you have put us in such capable hands with Inger Erickson, with John Chan, with Roxanne Favors, with Devaney Price, you know, the list goes on and on, but we have an amazing team. And so I wanted to say thank you all for that.
Thank you. We will get there. Our next item is downtown Phoenix Economic Development Tools.
Vice Mayor Pastor and members of the subcommittee, this is going to be the first of three discussions on economic tools that we could look at exploring for downtown. And this was at the request similar to the last item of the chairwoman. So with that, we have Christine Mackey, our Community and Economic Development Director, Lauren Amor, our Community Relations Manager, Tom... Lauren Amor, our Community Relations Manager, Thomas Stack, our Assistant City Attorney, and Zandan Keating, Deputy Director of Community and Economic Development. And with that, I will turn it over to Christine Mackey.
Ginger?
Yes.
Um, can we move this item to April, May? Is it possible to move this item? Because I have a feeling this is going to be longer than the half hour that we have.
Vice Mayor, Pastor, and subcommittee members, yes, we can move this item to our May meeting. This would be another robust discussion, and so we'd be happy to do so.
Okay. I would like to do that, because I know some of us, many of us have back-to-back meetings, and we're just trying to keep ourselves on time.
We will be sure to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. So I will continue this item. Do I need to make a motion? We can just do it.
Vice Mayor, if you don't mind, if you can make a motion to move this to our May, let me get you the date. Our May 25th meeting.
Can somebody make a motion for me?
Madam Chair, I'll move to have our discussion on item five, Downtown Redevelopment Tools, on May 25th, 2022.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any future agenda? I, I believe we don't have call to, call to the public?
Vice Mayor, there is no call to the public today.
Okay. And then any future items for May?
For the month of...
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm hearing none. I got my calendar, Ginger. For the month of May is diversity, equity, inclusion, convention, sports, and leisure market study, key economic indicators, and downtown Phoenix economic tools. That's what I have for May. Anybody else? Hearing none, meaning adjourned.